Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order our board meeting. And if we could all please stand for the pledge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we live, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as broad. Thank you very much. And I need a motion to approve the agenda. And a second. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Now, we have a very special recognition of our... Did somebody say something? Okay, we have a very special recognition of an employee that is retiring. Sam Avalos. Hi, Sam. Thank you so much for all your years of dedicated service. We really appreciate you. And I believe... And we have Denise Fisher would like to say a few words.
Okay. I'm Sam's direct supervisor, and I just have a couple of things to say, short and sweet. Sam Avalos has been a valued employee of this district for seventeen years. He started his career in two thousand and six as a grounds custodian floater going back and forth between Annalee and El Malino. After eight years, he was placed full-time at Annalee as the grounds custodian and stayed until two thousand and twenty-two, when he moved to Laguna as the full-time grounds custodian in Forestville. So after all of those years and working at both sites, Sam truly knows both campuses inside and out. And personally, I'm gonna miss that and then the longevity and knowledge in our department. So congratulations, Sam, on your retirement. We're very grateful for your hard work and dedication over the years. And our department won't be the same without you. So here's to best wishes for happiness and relaxation and enjoying your freedom. Don't forget to come back and say hi. Thank you.
Sam, too, thank you so much for your dedicated service. We have a couple of things here for you as well. And I believe we have some cookies over there to celebrate your retirement and to once again thank you for your dedicated service to our district. Yeah, I'm sorry. We have a couple of minutes, so you can get up and get a cookie. I didn't know I needed to say that. But go right ahead and help yourself to a cookie. All right. Thank you very much for the cookies. Mia, did you pick those up? Karen, awesome, thank you. And it is time for input from the public regarding items not on open session agenda. First up is Mr. Casey Jones. Awesome job last night, Mr. Jones.
There we go. Okay. Anyway, so thank you, Jake. If my math is right, if we get one transfer student that brings about twenty thousand dollars into the district, I think very rough math numbers, about five transfer students pay for what I do at the whole thing at the school. And so just as an example, in my jazz band, my zero-period class, I have students from Renner Park, Katari, and Healdsburg coming to the school for our programs, being a part of that. And so a lot of the students in the music program come here for those things. And my role has been trying to get those information about our schools out. And so I've been doing a little bit of a social media campaign, mostly advertising showcase night. Here's one. It's square because it's for phones and stuff, but this is an example of what I've been working on to promote our program. This is one of our wonderful jazz band students. And so the students get a chance to talk about what they do. And it's not just band. It's been other programs as well. We've been talking about ceramics, the previously mentioned Project Make, as well as a lot of other offerings.
I'm C, and I'm a senior here at Annalee High School. In the past, I've been in ceramics, concert band, symphonic band, in the musical production of Chicago. And I am currently in honors symphonic band, as well as jazz band. I've made a lot of friends throughout the years, and I really enjoy being in the Annalee band community.
So hopefully, some of you have seen some of these... There we go. Some of these things on social media already, just as a way to get more of the information out. And so my goal is to continue to do that. We do have a couple upcoming events on November fifteenth through the seventeenth. We'll have our dance show at the Elmo Campus at the Perform Arts Center. That's at seven. And then December eleventh is the band concert, and December twelfth is the choir concert at here on campus in the theater at six thirty. I think it's very important that we continue to do the outreach, because a lot of the schools, since we aren't a K-12 district, can go where they choose. And in fact, one of the conversations I had with Sun Ridge Charter School in town was very much about how the students are choosing to go to other schools, Tech High, Credo, and just looking at what they have to offer. And they didn't know that we have a string orchestra. Whether or not it was on hiatus for a year or not, since it's been going, since Vance Regan was here, I think it was a little... It was surprising to me that they didn't know, because for them being a Waldorf school, they require and they have a healthy strings program. And even if it is, again, from Sun Ridge, we had six students come here out of what I believe was eighteen of their promoting seniors still. You know, having that number of students can really help our district. And if they're willing to commute to the middle of town from wherever they're at, I'm sure it can just take a little more finagling to get them over to our wonderful campus and all our wonderful offerings. So that's just a little bit of what I've been doing, what I've been updating. And you should all have a brochure for our fine arts. And so those are all the offerings there. It mentions a little bit about CTE and other things, but that's all student-designed events and art. So there's no clip art or no stock images on there. That's all student-created. And I'm really proud to distribute that to the community as well. And I know Heidi Mickelson has a parallel one with CTE and the ag pathways. And so I didn't manage to grab a couple of those for you, but I recommend you check those out, too. How am I doing on time? Okay.
You're doing great. We appreciate everything you're doing. So we're very happy to hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, have a wonderful night.
You, too. Thank you. Good job.
Oh, can I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Sorry. I just always, this is like, oh, it pops in my head. I did get a handout, a mailer, from a concerned parent who is in Santa Rosa about promotional material from Santa Rosa schools. And so I think we need to do more in terms of media outreach, just to get the information out there of what we're doing, because right now, it's only what you Google, and we know what happens when we just Google things on the internet. So I'll be asking more and researching more of those things. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. David Carey.
Thank you. And as always, thank you for your service. As I've been talking with people about what the district is doing and some of its initiatives going forward, a not insignificant number expressed some skepticism about whether some of these things will actually produce very much. And it takes different forms, gets expressed different ways. But it kind of boils down to kind of not feeling like some of the things that district says they're gonna do is very credible, or there's mistrust about what will actually be produced. And I find that a little bit frustrating. But I think maybe to some extent, there's some, some of that is warranted, probably not all of it, but some of it is warranted. And I don't know to what extent some of that is maybe a little bit of rationalization for not getting involved and helping out. And I kind of thought about, you know, how that keeps us from getting things done that we'd really like to do. And one of the things, as I thought about it more, that kind of turned it around a little bit was maybe to what extent this board and our district leadership has some mistrust of people that they engage with also in some ways. For example, does that contribute to why there's not as much transparency as there could be? So I just wanted to put that out as a little bit of food for thought for all of you. And think about it and see if there's anything that might be helpful for you going forward. Thank you.
Mary Fricker.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I want to alert everyone to this wonderful cover story in the October issue of Sebastopol Living Magazine about Mia and her family. Mia, this is awesome. Congratulations. In the same magazine, I also discovered a nice article by Loretta about the new inductees to the Fourth Annual Sports Hall of Fame. Congratulations to them. But why don't you feel proud of those athletes? I'm so proud of them. I also feel sad because El Malino had a Hall of Fame, too. My son, one of my sons, is in it. PE teacher Nancy S. just ran that program. And a few years ago, before the consolidation, she gave all the materials to me so we could induct our Fourth Annual El Malino Hall of Fame. But that never happened. And now I wonder what's going to happen with the El Malino Hall of Fame? And will El Malino's past athletes, many who live in our community today, ever have opportunities to be honored? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we need a motion for the consent calendar.
My move that we approve the consent calendar.
And I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Actions on items heard in closed session.
No action was taken.
Thank you. And we are on reports. Student Board Representative, Ms. Karis.
All right, thank you. It's been a really exciting month on campus, so luckily I get to talk about a lot of fun stuff tonight. Our homecoming was on October twenty-first, and the theme for that was Enchanted Forest. And it was a lot of fun, but there were a thousand one hundred students in attendance. And it was also an incredible fundraising event for our junior class. The profit from that dance was almost ten thousand dollars. So as our juniors are looking forward to begin planning prom in the spring, being able to make that much money off of this event guarantees that prom is gonna be just incredible. Many of our fall sports are coming to a close, and several Annalee teams have had lots of success in their seasons. Our girls golf team brought home the league pennant. Boys and girls varsity and JV cross-country were all undefeated throughout the entire season and won league as well. Thank you. Varsity boys football qualified for a home playoff game, which will take place this Friday here. And all of our fall teams are going to be honored at the Fall Sports Awards in the theater here next Tuesday, November fourteenth. As you may or may not remember, the job of the freshman in the leadership class is to organize fundraisers. And our class president and vice president for that, they've been hard at work with fundraising. They just finished their fundraiser for the Maui Wildfire Relief Fund, and that brought in around five hundred and fifteen dollars in donations. But their fundraising isn't over, and right now, they're beginning a canned food drive to get incoming eighth graders excited about being freshmen at Annalee next year. Leadership class has spent a lot of time over the past couple of weeks visiting graduating classes at feeder middle schools. And we've told them about life at Annalee, anything from athletics to academics to school culture. And I had a lot of fun doing that. I got to be a part of most of the middle schools that we visited. And it was really exciting, because we do have a great school with a lot of exciting programs for them. And it was cool to be able to tell them face-to-face about why Annalee is a fantastic school. And we also brought them some cookies courtesy of the culinary department. And last night was our showcase night, and middle schoolers and their parents could come visit the campus and get a first look at the programs and opportunities that we offer. And overall, our reception as the leadership class has been really positive. And I've personally gotten the chance to talk to some of the eighth graders. They seem like they're super excited to be a part of the Annalee community. So it's been an overall positive experience for me, being able to talk to them, and I hope it's been a positive experience for them as well. One of the things the leadership class is looking forward to most in the coming months is our first-ever winter dance, and we're calling it Snowco. This dance, this dance will be put on at the end of January, after we get back from winter break. And it will be organized by the sophomore class. Typically, dances are organized by the junior class. So this is a really fun opportunity for our sophomores to get a taste of what dance planning will be like for them next year. Overall, we've had a fantastic month here on campus and a lot that we're looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Karis. And I just want to say your outreach efforts are particularly appreciated by the board. That's great. Thank you. Association report. Lily, would you like to start?
Hi. Lily Smith Hammer, President of the Teachers Association. Karis, you are an incredible public speaker. I can't get over it. Every time you talk, I'm just blown away. I do not have papers in front of me, and I just wanted to say, as we just heard about the Hall of Fame for El Malino, one of the original ideas being thrown around when we were going through the consolidation process was to have some sort of on-campus museum to our history. And I would love for us to keep that in our minds as we go through the planning process for the new building and whatever will take the place of the auto shop someday, that we have a place on campus, like what Santa Rosa High has upstairs that they use for fundraising. They bring alumni groups through there. As people come on campus for reunions, reunion tours go through there and give a donation. The history classes use it for oral history reports and local history projects. And it would be a great place for us to have some of our items and our history and our students' names memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. And Julie? Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie McClelland, librarian here, and I'm on the negotiations team for CSEA. So yeah, everybody's busy on campus right now. There's a lot going on. Everybody's doing stuff. Custodians are especially busy, as I'm sure you guys know, and we just really appreciate their efforts. And yeah, really appreciate their efforts. We're looking forward to negotiations getting started, and yeah, that's coming up soon. The other thing is that our chapter, we're having really good attendance. We're at a hundred percent with our members and just really good attendance and participation, and that's kind of awesome. That's different than it was in the past, and it's really great. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie, can I ask you a question about the attendance? Might you take a stab at what you think that could be attributed to?
I'm not sure. It used to be we were at two different campuses, and so it rotated each time. And so there's sort of a core group of people that came to each campus. I mean, the president and those had to go to both. But I know when I was at El Malino, that's where I could be. And just the drive between, which also gives me an appreciation for what the kids are doing. But yeah, I think people are stepping up. We're getting more of the consortium people coming because we're here. So that's kind of nice, and that's a really young, most of them are pretty young, so it's nice to have some fresh energy. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly, but it's nice to just have a larger group than just a handful of people. Yeah.
Thank you. Board reports. Sean, do you have anything that you'd like to report?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good for me. Thank you.
Louis?
I have nothing to add momentarily.
Thank you. Debbie?
Yeah, I'll just report on a couple of events that I've attended. I went to the first LCAP Ed Partner meeting, and I think we're gonna have a report on that, so I won't go into the details on that. Annalee Showcase Night last night seemed very well-attended. And not only by prospective students and families, but staff. I went to the showcase night last year. It just seemed like there were a lot more people in the gym this year at each table, and it just seemed really vibrant, so that was really nice. Couple of weekends ago, actually, Harris participated in this, as did Sean. I went to the Guernville School Fall Community Engagement Fair. And I guess there are a team of leadership students there, and Sean and his lovely wife were there. And there were different community organizations and parents and families. And it was just really nice to talk to some of our current students that were there and also some prospective students who are currently Guernville students and hear about, you know, some of their wishes and dreams for their high school experience. And I think that is just about it.
Thank you, Debbie. I, too, went to the showcase last night, and I just want to thank all members of the staff for the effort that you put in. It was really a wonderful evening. I really appreciate your time and effort very much. And that's about it. Superintendent Report.
Yeah, just to reiterate, you know, big thanks to Annalee staff and students for putting on an amazing showcase night. I really enjoyed the shows in the theater, jazz, choir, drama, and dance. And then dance kept it rolling in the gym. Working the gym and talking with the staff was really enjoyable. I was planning to be at the table with Mia. We had a district table, and Gloria joined us. And we had some LCAP information, some enrollment information. But I spent most of my night just catching up with staff that I haven't had a chance to talk with. So that was a great evening, and I think it's the enrollment increases that we saw through last year's efforts, the momentum is there. And I really hope that we can continue seeing more students coming into our district. We're looking forward to our next negotiation sessions with West Sonoma County Teachers Association on Monday, November thirteenth. And we have our first session with CSEA on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth. Casey, I'm glad you had a chance to get up at the podium and speak, but one of my recognitions was gonna go your way for all of your hard work for the creation of this brochure. And we know that the fruits of your labor are gonna bring more students in and promote all the amazing things that are happening here on our campus. So I want to recognize the ag department, and specifically the students that were recently celebrated for the American Degree Awards, and that's Cassie McKnight, Emily Manners, Bella Godd, and Frances Marshall. These students have made an impact within the chapter and our high school. They faced adversity and challenges that most will never understand and couldn't be more proud of their efforts. I want to recognize Ellen Hulamard for her tireless efforts and diligent work in revising our short-term independent study contract to ensure accountability and compliance and streamline that process for other teachers. Independent study is hard to manage. It's a big ask, and Ellen's done a really great job, and we really appreciate her work there. I want to acknowledge something that I referenced in my superintendent's report last month regarding the diversity and anti-racist equity audit that was initiated by Sonoma County Office of Education. Through working with the DEI community and our leadership team, we made the decision not to pursue that partnership at this time. We're really excited about the work that we're doing internally with our committee, and you'll learn a little bit more about that this evening. But I wanted to acknowledge that that was a decision that we made, and we just didn't feel it was the right time for our school to embark on that journey. And I think that we can do our own work locally within our committee and have a little bit more value in that regard, as opposed to working with a national organization that's not centered here in Sonoma County. We got a new district veal for workability. It's little things that can bring a smile to your face. It's a Toyota Sienna hybrid. We are surplusing two old vehicles tonight, as reflected in the consent calendar. And I just, it made my week last week to see those students rolling around in a new vehicle, reliable transportation. And that's really cool. Little things sometimes go a long way. And I'm really excited about tonight's agenda with regard to the Ed Services items. Our focus for the year has been on district-wide strategic planning, and that's gonna be represented in tonight's Ed Services discussion items. And we've got some great folks here that have been doing amazing work, and I'm really looking forward to hearing them present some of these items with me. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And we are on Board Organization. First reading of proposed draft board meeting calendar for two thousand and twenty-four. Do you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We do this each year. This is a first read. We're proposing the calendar, and I'll open it up for any questions.
I think that's a really great idea, Sean. You know, a big part of a lot of the initiatives that we're doing, the LCAP, the the community school, really is about, a big part of it is engaging the public. And I think going out into locations where having our meetings closer to where people live, I think, could really make a statement and show kind of like what Mr. Carey was saying earlier, that we want to do something different. I think that's a really great idea. I would support that.
I have a couple concerns about that that I would like to talk about. First of all, the cost of having the meeting out there. We do have our meetings now on Zoom, so I feel like they are accessible. And the other thing I'm always concerned about, probably because I've experienced it, is the time that it takes for our staff, our teachers, to drive all the way out to Forestville. If it wasn't accessible to the community, I would be more inclined to agree with that. But I would really like to know the cost, because we brought this up before, and it was, you know, quite a bit, and that concerns me.
Yeah, the cost associated would be overtime for the tech staff. But I think the bigger challenge that we got to realize is that we wouldn't be able to provide Zoom accessibility if we were out on the Forestville campus. The way that we're able to do that with the technology that's set up in this library, we don't have that capacity. So that would incur additional costs for us to set up to be able to provide Zoom access. So if it was the will of the board to do a quarterly meeting, then we wouldn't be able to offer Zoom access.
Could that be a reasonable compromise? Or are we mandated now to have Zoom access?
It's a board decision. We felt like it was the best process to make it a regular practice. But it's really the will of the board. And I think as long as we're transparent with the community, that when we're on the Forestville campus... And I think as long as we're transparent with the community, that when we're on the Forestville campus, should it be the will of the board, that we wouldn't zoom in, which would provide accessibility issues for, you know, e- either way, we have challenges for folks that come to our meetings. I think we have a, a general, regular population of folks that attend. But by all means, we want to make these meetings as accessible as possible, which is why we made the decision to stream them and allow people to access via Zoom. So this is, this is your meeting. This is your decision. And, you know, we can adjust either way. In terms of cost, it would be the overtime for staff when they go out that way to set up. So.
I mean, it, it seems to me it takes me 18 minutes to drive from my house in Sebastopol to the Almolino campus. It's not an hour, you know, and it's like not as far as going to Santa Rosa.
So. How much overtime would it be? How, how long does it take for setup?
I don't think the costs and overtime, it's really more the demand it puts on the staff. And really overtime is optional. So we would really be asking our staff to work outside of their normal day. But I think that's something that we've done before at times when we've needed. This is really your decision. I just wanted to highlight the complication.
So cost is important to me. I want to know.
Yeah.
I recall that we had this conversation a year ago when we were looking at this. And the, there, we had asked for at the next meeting to bring those costs back. And I don't think that we ever did see that. So if, because this is a first reading, I think it would be useful to actually be able to see that. So it's not here to say, what is the cost? And when we talk about the time once a quarter for a few staff members to drive from here to Almolino, I think we really have to think about all of the kids, all of the kids and the families that need to do this twice a day that for years and years did not have to. I think that it's a very small time price to pay. And when we look at the cost, I mean, community engagement is important. We're doing these, you know, this costs something. We're reaching out to the community. So it's not just a sunk cost that doesn't go anywhere. It, it shows our values. So it's not just a cost that, we would have to see what that number is.
It would be, and I can run those numbers, but literally, literally it's overtime for whichever staff Jenny recruits to go out there. You know, and, and that length of the time.
And in terms of the Zoom not being available, I'm confused about that because I use the Almolino library for hybrid meetings from time to time.
It's just not set up. So that would be new technology that isn't set up in this way. So by all means, I see.
Maybe keep that in the cost. Yeah, maybe include that in what it would, what it would cost to, you know, wheel in a screen or.
And it's not, it's, it's not just the cost of the tech staff. It's also the cost of the setup. And it's also the cost of the takedown and of the the janitorial staff that have to go out there and take care of that too. So we have to look at that as well. My other concern is, is when we talked about this before, we did it in May. And if you'll all remember, I very carefully looked at the room in May because we had the meeting there in May. We had about six people in the room and two of those people were not normal participants that we normally get. One of them was a parent or excuse me, a grandparent from the Hessel area. And the other was a staff person from the county that attended. There were no participants from anyone in the Far West County area. I thought that was quite interesting, yet we were in the Far West County. I would hope that if we are going to be out there and we're going to do this, that we get people that want to come. I think because we have Zoom here, anyone that's from anywhere in our area actually can participate. And they don't even have to come out. They can sit home in their pajamas and their slippers and be here and participate. So we're giving them that opportunity that they don't have to be here in person. And so I think this actually, with the Zoom is a much better opportunity for everyone than it is to, for us to be in a in, in a different building where we don't have the Zoom capability. And so being out there, I'm not sure is the, the end-all, be-all. Especially when no one attends.
I, I'm in favor of us meeting once a quarter out there. You know, when when you have a meeting with someone and you offer to go to their office instead of them coming to you, it's a sign of respect. And there's that issue and it's like the elephant in the room here sometimes. And it's important. And I think it's our responsibility to try to heal or work on some of those old feelings. They're, they're real and they happen for good reasons. And so I think making the effort and to some extent, some cost to meet part of our community where they live is important.
It's just very important for me to look at our fiscal responsibility and see how much it costs. So that's really super important.
Yeah, I, I mean, I see the value. I understand the will of the board to look at the fiscal impact. I don't anticipate it being greater than the value that we would get in offering an in-person meeting quarterly at, at the Forestville campus. So I'll run those numbers, bring it back to you. The board can have a discussion, take action. At one point, we agreed to do that and we did the meeting in May. And then it wasn't built into the fall calendar because we were on Zoom. So I think this is a good discussion. I think that there are a lot of people that would feel acknowledged. And who knows, maybe we could have more people attend in person. If we were there and it was calendared as a regular event, I'll run the numbers, bring them back to you. The board can make a decision and give me direction.
And I think it could take time for people to come out. I don't think you can hold a meeting one time and say, well, people weren't there. At my work, we are providing simultaneous Spanish interpretation at every meeting that we do. And we work really hard to get people to know about that. And we try to make it a point never to skip that because there's an expectation that if, if it's there and they don't have to ask for it, then, then the people feel comfortable attending. So over very many, many months, more people are starting to know that this is available. And so I think by making it a regular, and I think we're only talking about once a quarter. It used to be alternating months. And that is something, that was a cost that was just part of, you know, the board meetings ongoing. So I think it's still less than alternating months, but it, it does, I think, show a respect, like Louis said.
Lily, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I was just wondering if you could maybe ask and see how the staff would feel about that and how they would feel about going out to the Forestville campus. Okay. Okay.
Thanks for your input. I really appreciate.
I just wanted to also bring it up to board members to look at the dates carefully to be sure that you don't have some conflicts with some sort of travel agenda you have or something going on. So that if we need to tweak a date or something, we can do it now. I know we all seem to, at times down the road go, ooh, gosh, can we change a date? And we all seem to be willing to do that. But it's always better to try to change the dates in advance than as they approach.
And, and if I may, some of the dates, we have to meet specific deadlines, March, May, June. So.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you and thank you for your input. I really appreciate it. Establishment, Establishment of the Annual Organizational Meeting of the Board of Education.
Yeah, we thought it would be best practice since this is the reorganization meeting that happens annually, that we give the board an opportunity to approve the date that we've targeted for the reorg. Out of respect for the board, it's a big date amidst the board calendar. So this is a new process for us, but out of respect for the board, we request that you approve the date that we've earmarked for the reorg meeting.
December 13th.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? The board? Do I have a motion there?
I move that we approve December 13th as our organizational meeting date.
Can I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Educational Services, California Community Schools Partnership Program and the Forestville Campus. I'm looking forward to hearing about this.
I'd like to welcome our Director of Special Education and Student Services Laura Schmidt and our new Wellness Coordinator Sheila Richmond to assist in presenting this item. We have a presentation that Jade will queue up here. Just pull it out. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about community schools and I will start right off. So what is a community school? Well, like it sounds, well, I'm also going to talk about the purpose of it. And then in terms of how to best develop a community school with community mapping, strengths, assets, gap analysis, and then the timeline that we're looking at in terms of this. Community schools are public schools. And like they sound, they involve the entire community. That's students, teachers, parents, caregivers, community-based organizations. And it, the goal is to provide a really well-rounded educational opportunity as well as support in a, in a sort of an overarching way for the students in order to get that academic success and whole person type success. A community school is also, it is a place, but it's also a set of partnerships between the school and various community resources. Okay, next slide. There's a video that says it much better than I could.
What makes a school a great school? Caring for the whole child. Expanding the horizons of learning. Building relationships with families. Working together to realize a shared vision. This is the school every student needs. This is a community school. Community schools are public schools that partner with stakeholders to create the conditions students need to thrive. Community schools can be found across the United States and their numbers are growing fast. But what exactly makes a school a community school? They integrate student supports. Clinics, counselors and other services ensure each and every student is ready to learn. They expand and enrich learning. Extended school days, summer programs and real-world experiences help students reach their full potential. They engage families and communities. Partnering with residents to identify and meet community needs makes everyone feel safe, welcome and involved in school. They lead in collaboration. Inclusive decision-making and peer learning builds trust among students, educators, families and communities. When a school stands on these four pillars, it's a community school. Research supports this four-pillar approach, but there's no one-size-fits-all model. Every community school is different because each community is different. Figuring out what it looks like in your community starts by getting actual community members involved. That's the full-time job of community school coordinators. They're the human bridge connecting all the partners and stakeholders that make community schools possible. So that's what makes a school a community school. Now, how do you pay for it? Startup costs like hiring a full-time coordinator can be raised from foundations or state and local governments. Tapping into existing funding and partnering with local businesses can bring in service providers. Sharing resources and staff with partners can help everyone do more. And as a community school becomes more established, leaders can advocate for budgets that sustain their impact and new funding to expand. Every community school is different. What will yours be like? Get started at communiteschools.futureforlearning.org.
Okay, and next slide. Thanks. Perfect. What I liked is how they pointed out how each community school is different based on our, you know, the community mapping, right? Which is our strengths assessment and then the gap analysis. For me, I think of it simply as what do we have and what do we need? And we get that input from the community, from all stakeholders, students, parents, community agencies, teachers. And I like the discretion that that provides us in making it our own. And in terms of the timeline, you can see up here, this initially started in February of this year, although I imagine it probably started long before that, maybe in the minds and the planning. But the submission of this planning grant and then it was awarded in June. And then my position was flown and then yay, I got hired in August. And I got to come up here and be with all of you from Los Angeles and I'm the luckiest person in the room. And so moving forward from here, now the implementation grant is what is what's going to be being worked on. So the end of this planning grant is in June of this school year. So in terms of community schools, next slide. This is moving forward. The community mapping and the asset, asset gap analysis, that's February through July where we really get the meat and potatoes of what the community wants, needs, sees as important, the values. And that's done through a series, a series of meetings and where we get the input and discuss, you know, all of that, those features. And then the grant is submitted in December and will hopefully be awarded in February of 2025. So it's a link, it's a bit of a lengthy process, but that's actually a really good thing in terms of meeting with all of the stakeholders and, you know, then discussing what we find in the community mapping process. In the strengths, you know, what we have and what we need, that takes time. So, next slide. Keeping in mind too, that with the philosophy of a community school is in alignment with all of these, the ELAC, the LCAP, Diversity Equity Inclusion and School Site Councils. And again, that's because of just what it is. It's a collaboration and it's inclusive. Next slide.
Yeah. So what would this look like for the students of West County? I hope you all had a chance to read through the background information because I provided some data that was presented to the, the board last year regarding the number of students that have left our boundaries for non-comprehensive high schools over three years. There was a total of 83 students for a net loss of over a million dollars. And in contacting those families and other families that have left the district since I've been hired, we learned that there is a growing interest of students and families to attend small, non-comprehensive high school programs. We heard it today. Casey mentioned students leaving for. Casey mentioned students leaving for Credo, for Tech High. Those aren't comprehensive high schools. Those are small, innovative, specialized-focused schools. So we asked the board to give me authorization to develop a design team and start thinking about what this could look like at the Forestville Campus, formerly El Malino, currently Laguna. And then we learned about this grant opportunity. The states put a lot of money behind developing community schools. Post-pandemic, we saw a large number of students moving away from just the traditional comprehensive high school. Look, we have an amazing comprehensive high school. We want to continue to build on that, promote that, and increase our enrollment for our outstanding Annaly programs. However, we know, based on research, based on numbers. And again, that's why if you haven't read the background information on this item, I encourage you to do so. This could look like a school based on the four pillars that we just learned about. And again, what did that video articulate? Every community school is different. It would be informed, the educational program, the services, everything that we do for those students through the gap analysis and the community mapping processes. We learned that through this grant, it would fund the initial position of the wellness coordinator, the, the planning grant, 200,000 over the year. But if we can qualify for the implementation grant, that would be 3.5 million over five years. There's two local school districts that have qualified for that. One is Gurnville, right here in our backyard, in our community. The other that we've researched and learned more about is Shoreline, on the borders of Marin and Sonoma out west. However, before I go any further, we have learned that the state requirements and metrics in all transparency for this grant have changed. That doesn't mean that we still can't build a community school. It just means that we may not qualify for this grant. We're going to put our best foot forward, learn more about the metrics that have changed, the, the requirements, and see if we can't qualify. If not, there are ways to continue to build a community school, find alternative funding, and then build sustainable funding through sustainable enrollment. Okay? The campus would be a hub, next slide please, Jade. A hub of local resources. The video and the presentation has talked about those four pillars. We're already in the process of building a community school for Laguna right now. The partnerships with West County Health, with Regional Parks, and with the Sonoma County Library are those community resources. Now, while that's a continuation program, we see the value in making that a, a community school while we're working towards building a non-continuation program that can also serve students on that campus. Continuing to expand business partnerships could help us with funding. Providing leadership opportunities, much like the ones that come out of the Regional Parks Program, extended learning programs. I've been talking with Dale Doherty, who's here tonight, about the idea that if we built the art room into a community maker space and we open that up to our feeder districts, to community members, we could provide some amazing experiences for students to engage in hands-on, project-based learning, learn about manufacturing, things of that nature. Educational possibilities, again, we would identify that through the community mapping process. We don't want to tell our community what they need. We want them to tell us what they need. And that's why we pivoted a little bit from our internal design team to looking at this grant opportunity as clarity as to how we really build something sound. The educational program could focus on programming, project make, robotics, engineering, and there could be opportunities for industry engagement. Obviously, core practice overlapping with academics, skills responsibility, because you really want that leadership component of that pillar. And again, engagement through project-based learning. Next slide, please. Serving the students of West County and beyond through researching enrollment trends and learning more about what our families need. In addition to looking at current inter-district trends, 27% of our population comes from neighboring districts. Not only could we build a community school that would be based on the needs of the students and families of West County, we would have something that would attract students from neighboring districts, much to Casey's point, talking about students leaving our district for programs that are in neighboring districts. I came from Windsor. You all know that. Windsor has a unique, innovative program called North Bay Met. When I was there, we had students from four different counties in that program bursting at the seams. One of their goals was to expand it and move it to the Brooks Campus. We have an amazing campus that we feel is underutilized. And why not provide another option for students in West County and beyond by building a community school? So we wanted to really give you this background regarding the grant, how the vision has shifted a bit with more clarity, because there's initiative behind this, the state's behind this. And we have a roadmap. And we have an initial grant, an amazing new employee that's going to help kind of lead this process. So really excited to present this to you tonight. Do we have anything else? A few more slides? Okay. Yeah, we went over timeline. So I want to thank Sheila Richmond for all the work that she's doing, building wellness programs. Laura kick-started our multi-tiered systems of supports. And we've put ourselves ahead of other districts that qualified for the implementation grant because our wellness program is so strong right now, right? So we can build on that and now continue to focus our efforts on what a community school could look like for West County.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. Thank you, Sheila. I think that a community school model is just exactly what students need. I know there's a lot of support statewide for this. I know California Teachers Association is very in support of the community school model. Not all community schools are non-comprehensive. And so my question, and Credo and Tech High are comprehensive. They, I mean, they, they, well, I guess my question, my question is, if students, if we launch this community school and students choose that because it has so many great supports that so many students need, especially, I mean, by the time we get that open, these are kids that started out in elementary school and were impacted by the pandemic. There's going to be so much need for this. My only concern is if they see all of these wonderful things and they start down that path and then they realize that they're cutting off their opportunities for college by not getting their A through G at a comprehensive, at a non-comprehensive. So my question wouldn't necessarily be, could this be a comprehensive school? But my question would be, is how could we, is it possible to create dual enrollment opportunities or ways for students that choose, you know, maybe in ninth grade, they don't know what they want to do, but then, you know, end of 10th grade, they're like, I want to go to this college. Will we have a way, will we be able to develop a way for the counseling staff to get them on a track so that they can go to this, to this community school and still go directly to a four-year college if they choose to do that?
That's a loaded question, right? Because I think we're, we're really looking at what's feasible, right? A community school in an innovative setting would cost far less in terms of staffing than a comprehensive high school. To be comprehensive, you have AP, a variety AP, CTE, many athletic programs, many other enrichment programs. Allowing college readiness and, and providing an avenue to college is something we could explore, right? But that also could definitely incur more costs with staffing. With small, innovative schools, teachers can teach outside of their credential. There's creative ways to maximize staffing within non-comprehensive community schools, which is why that was what we started looking at building on the El Malino campus. Building sustainable enrollment through, or revenues through enrollment, you got to look at, you know, the more you expand in terms of some of those specialty programs that we have here in Annaly. And let's be honest, we don't want to create a program that, that competes with our amazing comprehensive school, period. That is not the goal here. So we have to really delineate what student population we're serving. And the number of families I've talked to, those questions I asked, are your students interested in attending a four-year school? The answer was, for many of them was no. So I think if we're clear in our efforts, we're clear in our communication, we realize what's feasibly, feasible financially, we'll build the right program. But through dual enrollment, through other opportunities, students may be able to expand their experience with what we offer to provide more opportunities post-secondary. But we need to build a sustainable model and we don't want to compete with Annaly High School.
And so these are things that'll come up in the community mapping. Because anecdotally, you've heard from a few people that they.
Not just a few. A lot. I spent a lot of time last year, I talked to every single family that entered, that requested an inter-district transfer out. And then I talked to many families from that study. So, I mean, the, the number is too great to count, but we will cover more ground through the gap analysis and community map, mapping process. And that's the integrity of the community, the California Community Schools Partnership Program, is to really dig in, to listen to all your ed partners. And mind you, we're talking to current families, right, with those that I just referenced. But this process is going to take us down into the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders that could potentially start when, if and when we were to open this new community school and start with a freshman cohort and build it year by year. And that's how you build sustainability. You start small, you let the enrollment, increase the staff, which is why it's not a comprehensive high school program with the vision that we have. Realistic.
Plus, I want to just say, I think it's important to note that if you have kids in the program where they belong, it actually will strengthen both programs. Any other comments or questions from the board? Jeannie?
I just want to say thank you, Chris, for bringing this to us and, and bringing this to the community. I know it's a vision that I have had for probably the 25 years that I've been involved with this school district to offer something for our students that are not our comprehensive high school student, that are not the students that want to go to college. I had a student that was a college-bound student and I had a student that was not. And God, did I wish we had this sort of a program for my son. And I know many, 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 many students that could have benefited from this type of a program. And I guarantee you, there are many, many, many more of them out in our community that whose parents and who they themselves as students are clamoring for this kind of an alternative or specialized program. They need something that's just different. They need hands-on, project-based type learning. They will be excited to learn and excited to have a career at the end of this that they can just launch into the world and not be worried about having to go to college or not go to college and disappoint someone. So I'm just so excited and thank you so, so much, Chris, for bringing this vision to us. And I can't wait for us to get moving forward. And thank you, Sheila, for all of your hard work. And thank you, Laura, too.
Something, please. Absolutely. And Laura references the work that we're doing. So we brought before you the demographer study. So we're going to engage in another small contract with them to further dig in to that data so that we can identify where our students are. And then last piece, in terms of just looking at maximizing staff. The Windsor model currently has one principal overseeing, well, last year, sorry, they changed it. It was one principal overseeing Windsor Oaks, which is their continuation, and North Bay Met. They, to expand, Nor, North Bay Met, being that it's been there for a number of years, they brought Windsor Oaks back under Windsor High School and, and tried to let that program take off a little further. So our vision would be to maximize our current Laguna administration, not necessarily the teaching staff, but administration and support staff to serve this model. Because we would start potentially with a freshman cohort, right? Then let the enrollment continue to help build and inform the school. Because we build the school based on the interests, the needs, and what we see and what we learn. But as new cohorts come in, we would be continuing to learn from those families, meeting them where they are and building out the program 10, 11, 12, to really replicate those needs over that four-year span. If that makes sense?
I want to take comments from the community, but first I'd like to hear from Mary Fricker, who put in a slip. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, we can't hear you on this one.
It's really exciting to be thinking about more ways to use the El Malino campus. Congratulations on getting that grant, that's awesome. Here are two things I hope you'll think about as we go on this road. The first thing is what happens to the El Malino memorabilia. Over the decades, over decades, El Malino was the most honored high school in this county. I wrote about it. There's a lot to be proud of there. What about the historic wooden El Malino sign out front, which I hear is soon going to be coming down? The long row of yearbooks that I hope and pray are still in the office vault? The Hall of Fame materials I've been carrying around in the trunk of my car for two years? With a list of people nominated but never inducted? The pictures of the athletes, hundreds of athletes on the gym wall that none of us can go see anymore? The display cases of scores of trophies and championship banners, the records of annual scholarship awards? So many precious things we'll lose if we don't have a plan. And second, the community school must have the support of the community. And as you know, in the El Malino region, that's going to take some work. I hope and believe, I know, that today's students are happy at Annaly. The staff has done such a great job of making everyone feel that they belong here. But many adults in the El Malino community feel discarded by the past leadership in this district. The memorabilia I just mentioned is a small example. Many of the people who won those awards when they were kids now live in this community. How do we reengage them? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, very much. We appreciate hearing. Anybody else from the community? Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Walker. I'm a student at Laguna. And you mentioned earlier that building a, I just want to say, I'm very excited of the prospect of building like a community skill, community school on the Laguna campus. But I was a bit concerned about what you were saying about possibly partnering with businesses. And I was curious about what that would look like.
Well, we're currently partnering with three organizations. You have West County Health, which provide all those health services. We've got the Sonoma County Library. And we recently engaged in partnership with, further engage with Regional Parks. So they're leasing some property and they're going to have some 18 to 22-year-old programs for students that are interested in that type of an industry. So it can look like that just expanded, maybe the library takes on more space, maybe there's more organizations. So that could be defined through the community mapping process.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir? Thank you. Anybody else? Sir?
Yeah, hi. I just have a question about how and when the community can engage in this process.
I'll leave that to Laura and Sheila. We will be, yeah.
Any other comments?
Plans in development. I think we highlighted that during the presentation.
February through July. It will take place.
Hi, I was also just curious where I could find more research, resources about the, the regional parks partnership?
It's coming.
Okay, cool. Great.
Any other comments or questions from the community? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
I have a request of the board. We have our report from Phoenix. And if the board would allow our student to provide that report on behalf of our Laguna students, should you still be interested? Okay.
Oh, great. Thank you. All right. Consideration of approval of recommended revisions of CSBA policies, AR 1330. Cross up, that's what I did. I'm way ahead. I'm sorry. Okay, diversity, equity and inclusion update.
I am really excited to welcome our three members of our DEI committee to the podium to present this item. We have our co-chairs Gloria Mora and Katie Mammon. And we have our diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator, Anita Sandwina. I didn't see you sitting over there, Anita. So I will turn it over to them. They are going to provide an update on all of the amazing work that we've done as a committee. Really proud of their efforts.
Well, hi, everybody. So good to be here. Yes, I'm Anita Bear Sandwina. The coordinator for the first time at our School of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Oh my God. And what I wanted to do is to share with you what I've been doing so far with the support of staff and our other TOSA and like that. So I've got three pillars to the job that I'm doing. The first one is coaching teachers. And I currently have 12 teachers that I'm coaching. And we're just getting to the point in the school year where I'm starting to get into classrooms. And we're starting to talk about those students that we'd really like to help and support. So that's very exciting. The other thing that I'm working on are restorative circle, proactive circle practice. So, so far this year, we opened the school year with, I did a circle for our classified staff. I'm hoping to continue those, a circle for our FFA ag students who really wanted to talk about how they were being perceived on campus. So we did a lot of listening for them. I've had a circle with our Hispanic Latinx students, boys. And that circle is ongoing. It's being led now by our Omar, our, one of our counselors. And we also had that circle extend to meeting our principal. So trying to just create length, links and communication. Did a circle for our, or instigated a circle for our El Malino staff towards the process of continuing the healing. And I understand that that's also ongoing now. Yes. We have ongoing circles with an organization that I work with, Community Matters. Sorry, my voice is tired. The Safe School Ambassador Program. We do circles monthly, sometimes bi-monthly to talk to kids and teach kids how to be allies to students on our campus. And so though, and we also have instigated a circle for, to support our students with the Israeli Hamas conflict that's going on. And out of that just bloomed today, the Jewish Student Union, which is in process of being formed. I'm also working on the forming of the Black Student Union. So that's in process as well. My other and final role is empowering kids. So I've had a lot of difficult conversations and supported students to have difficult conversations with each other with matters of mediation, matters of harassment. Both supporting the students that are being harassed and speaking to students that are doing the harassing. What else? At the start of the year, at the recommendation of the, of the student activists, I thought this was a great idea. We sent out a pronouns, pronouns survey to all teachers and all students so they could understand the ramifications of making a name change in areas and for teachers to be able to get that information in a way that's private. So that students can choose whether to, they out themselves or not. Let's see, what else? I did a series of videos on Title II, VI and IX. Those videos are going up on our website. Those videos were shown over the course of a week to all students at our video announcements. I've been sending out other posts, including the Stop It app and encouraging students who are being harassed to report that harassment anonymously. But to let us know who's doing the harassing, so we can talk to them and start making some changes. Also, announcements are going out via Parents Square and the announcements for all of these other things that I've been talking about, the formation of the Black Student Union, et cetera. We have, let's see, I've had a visit with the Annalee activists and that has led to the addition of some supports for teachers at our third PD that's happening in January about neuroatypical students. And I've been doing some consulting with teachers who are teaching sensitive material or material that's about people that don't look like or have the same heritage as them. And things to be aware of, how to approach it, so that it's inclusive and fully representing those, those people. I've done some teacher mediations as well. Some empathy interviews have just taken place with students who've received more than three detentions. So the purpose of that was to discover, you know, if students understand why they're getting a detention, how, what they were feeling when they got the detention. And asking them to communicate with teachers if there are reasons they're getting them that are beyond their control. We had several students tell stories about how they are driving to three other locations for younger siblings. And so it's not near impossible for them to get here on time. And so we talked about, well, perhaps communicating with your teacher could support alternative solutions than racking up 10 detentions for, for that. So we talked about that and a lot of other discoveries were made. Some tears were had. And I think it's, it's going to end up making some good changes to our discipline matrix. I've also been to meetings to talk about and hear about ways that we're changing our discipline matrix. And I've also completed a, a little study of the data of who's getting detentions to figure out, how are we doing with that in relationship to our numbers overall? And there were some interesting discoveries. I can share that with y'all if you're interested. So that's it so far.
Yes, she has been. Thank you, Anita. My name is Gloria Mora. I'm your West Sonoma County Union High School District Communications Coordinator. And then also the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Co-facilitator. Here alongside me is Katie Mammon, the other co-facilitator, and we are here to give you a progress report. So I'm going to kick us off. I have two items to talk about. The first is our DEI framework, previously known as our DEI Strategic Plan. And the second has to do with our need for more diverse input. So the DEI Committee was given the task of creating a DEI Strategic Plan. We have determined that we need to change the name of the strategic plan. So it is not confused with our Local Control Accountability Plan, which is the strategic plan for our district. Sorry, I'm nervous. So our document is more of a DEI framework. We have yet to come to consensus on a name. But its purpose is to integrate into our LCAP and ensure that we are serving all students. Going into the diverse, diverse input topic, we have started crafting the DEI framework. And we have been very fortunate to get the perspectives of our activist club, the SUN Group, David Carey, and many other contributors, which we are very grateful for. However, we know that we need more diverse input. And so we are going to be working on outreach to ensure our plan is robust and serving all students, families and staff members. And that will include also diversifying our committee. Now I'm going to pass it over to Katie to get into our process.
Sure. And I'll just add a couple of quick points to that. Just building on outreach, again, just to extend a little bit. The committee has been meeting now for eight and a half months, I think. And in that time, we kind of created a fairly comprehensive strategic plan or DEI framework. Again, with the input of these different constituencies. And then, you know, kind of, I think once that kind of first draft got completed, we took a step back and there were a few, you know, insights that we had that this plan isn't finished to be delivered to the board as a proposed framework, but still needs more work. So on the outreach front, there's, that, I just want to highlight some of the work that's happening in the committee right, right now. And, and hopefully in our next meeting, which will be creating more of an outreach plan to bring these draft ideas out, particularly to kind of subpopulations that we think we haven't received enough input from. So we're kind of doing some gap catching and filling in. So we'll be doing, that, our thinking is, we haven't agreed on this yet, but to do some one-on-one conversations and then some focus groups or circles with certain communities, including teachers, the ELAC community and potentially others. So that outreach will be happening again, hoping to make the plan more comprehensive. And then we're also really looking at the structure of the plan. And that, you know, we've had this kind of healthy, I think, tension around, you know, some committee members wanting, you know, the accountability of, you know, having timelines and name, naming who would be accountable for certain pieces. And trying to balance that with the desire to have, you know, the leadership in the school and teachers, people implementing the plan have, you know, the ability to implement creatively and according to what makes sense for them in the moment. So that's a kind of a healthy tension we've been working with and, and also how to kind of make this plan, you know, digestible. So those are some of the areas that we're working on. And yeah, I think it's shaping up well and looking forward to, to more. So yeah, again, just one key point, it's, you know, we had hoped to have it delivered now or, you know, over the last couple of months. And I think it's a good thing that we're taking a little longer to do due diligence and make sure that the DEI plan is really inclusive and equitable in how we're putting it together as well. Thanks.
Any questions, comments from the board? Lewis, did you have something you wanted to say?
It's incredibly gratifying to see how much has been accomplished. I mean, Anita, all the things you're working on are things that I think a lot of us had really hoped for. Because it's addressing inclusion across class and geographic region and gender and race and religion and all the, all the different ways that we separate ourselves from each other. And we're actually addressing it out in the open instead of sweeping it under the rug, you know. So thank you. It's like, it's pretty amazing. And it's interesting to see how much we're accomplishing, even though we're still working on the framework. It's like we didn't let ourselves fall into the trap of, oh, we have to have a perfect plan and then we can start doing something. Well, we're doing something and meanwhile, we're working on a plan that'll be good enough. I think being on the committee, there's a couple of issues that are a little bit open right now that I don't know whether we can get board input on now. And Katie and Gloria, Anita, jump in on this. But, you know, one of them is to do with committee composition. We have a couple of open seats that we really should fill that would also help with, with diversity on the committee itself. We have a really weird issue where we have three different people on the committee that are related to three other people on the committee, which was not intentional. And it's crazy and embarrassing that it happened that way. But my wife is on the committee and my daughter is on the committee. Because there needed to be a parent and she wanted, was willing and no one else did. And then my kid was like, she would do it and no one, so anyway. And then Katie and her daughter on the committee and Gloria's cousins with Nicole. So full transparency, this is ridiculous. And needs to be addressed. I mean, all those people have been doing good work, but it's just not right. So that needs to get resolved and we haven't figured out whether it should get resolved immediately or in January or in June. Because of the school year, because of when people started on the committee, which was in March. And if you go a year, then that would be March. It, there's, there's issues about continuity and finishing up the framework because the people involved with it now are, have their heads deeply into the language of it and we're really close to, I think, having it be done. On the other hand, we really should have more input in the committee relations more diverse. So we, we probably could hammer those things out at the next meeting, which is in a few weeks. Or we could look to the board to just help us, like, just make some decisions. Cause there's really no wrong decisions in any of this. I mean, there's, there's really good arguments for keeping continuity and keeping people on the committee who are on it now just for another few months to get the framework done. And there's also a strong argument to say we need more diversity. And if some new people come in and have really different ideas and it slows the process down, then we'll probably get a better plan out of that. And that's okay, too. So I'm kind of looking for.
I have a comment to address that. I, I wonder, you know, the committee has a specific number of voting members, but it's a public meeting and other people can attend. I wonder if it's worthwhile to start doing some recruiting, invite people that might be interested in taking over those seats to join in the meetings while the current people are still there, not as voting members, but as in order to facilitate the continuity so that they can be there for a period of time and also provide that additional perspective of diversity during that time period. Because the voting members could still listen to that input. And that might just be a way to get the best of both worlds.
Well, and they also might be able to provide some input, even though they're not voting members. They can still provide input.
People coming to the meetings and kind of sitting in. people coming to the meetings and kind of sitting in have been, I think, pretty free to comment and there's been great input. So it's not that's totally possible.
And you said you still have, and you have a couple of seats that are empty, you said?
Yeah, what are they? Do you need another teacher?
I can chime in here.
Yeah, please.
Um, so the committee composition has 12 members. They include our superintendent, our DEI coordinator, uh, two certificated teachers, one classified member, two um, students, uh, the family engagement facilitator, and the two principals, and then two parents or greater community members, et cetera. So the open spaces come one from Anita, who was taking up a certificated teacher slot, but has since then moved into the DEI coordinator slot. One of them comes from myself. Last year, as a college and career coordinator, I was taking up the classified employee slot. I'm no longer in CSCA, so that's another open spot. And then the other one, this has to do with the family thing. Nicole was taking up a certificated teacher spot. Um, it was formerly another teacher who um, said, oh, you're kind of more diverse than me and I don't have the capacity to do this right now, although it's important to me. Will you step on? Nicole did. But um, we're related and she's a teacher on special assignment focusing on ed services. So we desperately need a teacher who is teaching in the classroom to provide us them. So those are the
To be out on eternity, leave in February, right?
Yes, out in, I believe, January would be right.
I'm just wondering if you could be um, a little specific on what type of cultural changes you're looking for our school community. Um, and I'm asking that because it might affect your recruiting efforts of who you would want on that committee if we knew exactly what the goals were in order to change our school community for the better.
I think some, um, and I hope this answers your question. Please let me know if it doesn't. Some gaps that we've identified that um, we don't necessarily have on our committee so far is um, someone who has engagement within our special education community. So Amy Rodriguez has come to a couple of our meetings. She's a parent educator here and has been able to provide us with some excellent um, feedback, but we would, we definitely need more. We need a voice from our Deep West. We don't have any representation currently of someone who's living very far out. Um, that represents a good portion of our district. Um, can anyone else think of other I probably, since such so much of our school is at a socioeconomic disadvantage, we also definitely need one or two other people who can represent that community as well.
Yeah, I would say because of some of our members leaving, that we need some more BIPOC people on the committee.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Okay, we have And I understand your concern, Louis, about and and Gloria's concerned about, you know, the
nepotism?
The nepotism, thank you. And and I think that I think I understand your your issue with that. And and I think that you should probably hang out and finish what you started. And come March, you guys need to address that. And because that'll be your year. And try to finish what you've started, get your, get your framework done and then really take a concerted effort of changing that dynamic when that time comes. Um, because trying to re-engage someone with the process and bring them all up to speed could really slow you down and maybe even damage some of what you've done and started. And um, and you guys have, you've you've got a good cohesive group now, bringing in some people, I think, could be real beneficial to fill those spots with with maybe the, with Amy Rodriguez and maybe someone else. And then um, and and but but I wouldn't break you up now because of that concern that you have and finish what you've got and then and then make a concerted effort to make that change down the road.
Similar comment. I mean, repopulating the 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 board is kind of dependent, not kind of, it is dependent on on willing participants. And um, I would just say, don't sacrifice what you're doing by disrupting it without having willing participants first.
What if we start recruiting in January to fill seats in by the end of March? So we start really talking to people. And that we plan on sometime in March having that transition. How does that sound to Katie? What do you think?
Yeah, I think that sounds great, but I would, I would love to see the empty seats get filled now.
Yeah.
And then so we can kind of get a start in and then that'll help inform what else we need, what other gaps we need to fill or what changes we need to make in March.
Anita, can you help reach out? Because you're more in touch with who might be willing or
Talking about certificated teachers? Sure.
Yeah, there's certificated teachers. There's two seats then.
Yeah.
And you said Amy, Amy, Amy Rodriguez, if she's already been coming, I would really encourage her to come on and join us.
Well, Lily, you can help too, because you know everybody. Send people, send people to toward Anita and Gloria. Right, we need their voices in this process. Okay, so we're going to try to fill seats as quickly as we can that are empty and we're going to make other major changes in March. That's our marching order, so to speak. Is that good?
Can I just, um, I I think that there's maybe, that's all sounds good to me, I'll just say, but um, going forward, um, I just want to make a case for it makes sense to me that um, generally, the DEI Committee would be reconstituted on an annual basis according to the school year. And so whoever gets put in place in March, um, I I still think maybe in in the summer, it'd be good to kind of check in and reconstitute or get a commitment from committee members to serve for a full year at that point. So I'm curious if the board aligns with, I'm seeing not a lot of nodding.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? I would highly recommend that you you do not do that, that you maybe get, set some terms and that that people do a a three-year term and that some others do a one year or two years. So you you have a rotation. You do not want everybody to drop off all at once because then you have a failure. So, yeah, um, yeah, and more continuity because I I've been on boards that do that, that all of a sudden, poof, everybody's gone. And then you have nobody that knows. And then you end up dropping it in the hands of someone like Anita and she goes, oh, great. So you want a rotation. So sets, and that's, you guys should work on setting that's that rotation of somewhere. And part of it is they need, somebody needs to be able to be willing to make that commitment. And maybe somebody only wants to do a year, but something like that.
You could um, perhaps start with half of them two-year terms, half one-year terms. And then each year, only half of the people will be turning over.
Awesome. Thank you for our feedback. I do want to touch on the continuity piece um, a little bit. We have continuity a bit built into our structure with the superintendent being on the committee or DEI coordinator being on the committee and both principals being on the committee as well. So there is some continuity there. What I'm hearing is that um, we should take this back to the DEI Committee and um, mention your feedback, start recruiting immediately and fill at least the open positions when people are interested. Does that sound like what we've agreed to?
Sure, go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, and I can give a little clarity to that. And I think that I'm really happy with where we are. I think the 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 healthy tension has has got us to a good place. And I think that the recommendations that we've seen recently, which will come back to the full committee um, and just reshaping the framework and looking at once the framework's completed, how we reorganize our meetings and the what we're, what we've heard is coming back periodically, quarterly as as like a check-in, right? And then utilizing the committee as a resource to further support the implementation of the work. Right? So I think we take all that we discussed back to the next meeting. We continue to work on this framework. We look at the diversifying the committee and then when it would feel most appropriate. And it seems like we're hearing from the board. And and this is what I mentioned in the last committee meeting is this is the board's committee. So it was most appropriate to have this discussion tonight to give you all an update and then it really lets you provide us with some guidance. And then we can go back and iron out some of the finer details within our governance structure and decision-making process. So really proud of 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 these three up here, obviously, our administrative team and the other folks that are on the committee. And I want to thank you all for coming tonight. So.
That is kind of why I was asking about
May I follow up with one thing?
Wait, wait, can I just say one?
Sure, yeah.
That's why one of the thing I asked was what what are the goals? You know, I want to, that's what I would like to know, what what the goals are and and you know, what in our school community are we working on? So that was why I asked that question. Go ahead, Jeanie.
Yeah, that's basically why I wanted to say too, is that at some point you may decide that the committee needs to be pared down and it doesn't need to be 13 people. It maybe needs to be six people, five people. But I think that, and maybe that comes back to the board to make that decision too, that based on what the framework is and your point, Chuck, as to okay, now what? We've got this framework. And does this committee now turn into an implosion committee, implementation committee? And and does it now need to be 13 people? Should it be smaller? And and that's, that's more another conversation for another time after the implementation. I mean, after the framework has been completed. So yes.
And the composition, it was to develop this support and build a more inclusive district. So I really like that. That's where my head was. We get the framework, we'll bring it back to the board, and then we revisit what the purpose is of this committee.
Well, I I was just gonna add my my read of the board resolution is that the purview of this committee isn't just to develop the strategic plan, but was to more generally advise and support the board on issues across, I think there are five or six areas listed. So it does have like a kind of more standing thing. Um, and Julie, you had asked a question. I wasn't sure if you were asking uh, the committee, what what the goal of the committee is, is is that?
Yeah, the committee as a whole, what broad, you know, it can be broad goals, but
Well, I I can just address that from my perspective. I think, um, I mean, the goal of the committee is to, you know, support the board and give like a a bunch of different vantage points in the system or perspectives on um, issues of equity inclusion. I think the we have a kind of mission and vision statement in the the framework, but it's really to support Portrait of a Graduate, to support all students um, in having equitable access to opportunities um, and living full life and not just the students, but also um, the wider school, community, staff and others that everyone feels a sense of belonging and thriving in this community.
Go ahead.
So I would add on to that, that the purpose of the committee is to address some longstanding problems that we've had. I mean, let's be honest, this district has had serious blows in its morale and its cohesiveness because of geographic issues, because of race issues, because of bullying, because of racial slurs, all kinds of stuff that's gone on for years here. And that drags us down. And in one way, you can say it hurts enrollment. Because the the rap about Annalee or this district, it could be better. And we want to try to fix, you know, I can't, we can't fix it, but we want to make it way better. And you can see already it's really getting better quickly. And so the purpose of the committee is is to make sure that we turn away from the errors of the past that have largely were unaddressed or not addressed competently and address them with intelligence and compassion and wisdom and community support so that we can have a much better feeling inside the district when it comes to our, any kind of diversity. So it's a powerful asset for the district to turn some of those things around. And 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 I think that I feel strongly that the committee needs to be ongoing. When the framework is done, there'll be changes to the framework, but also it's like keeping an eye on that. Not like a watchdog, that sounds adversarial, but as a trusted advisor to the board and to the committee around these kinds of issues.
And Julie, if I may, I think if we asked everybody on the committee what the purpose of it was and how they interpret what really resonates with them and what's written in the resolution, we're going to get 15 different answers. So I'm really excited about where we are. I think we know that our next steps are to complete the framework. And I think we've ironed out some of those healthy tensions uh, that we were obviously concerned with as the folks that have to implement the plan and keeping the committee more high level, more global. Like what? This is what we want to accomplish. This is what we want for our students. And then we go figure out how to implement.
I just have one, I just have one little comment. Purpose and goals are different. I I want to know what I understand the purpose. I understand the reason of why we need it. I'd like to see specific goals.
So we have um, within our DEI framework, we have five pillars. And I'm going to try to rattle them off the top of my head right now. They are systems and structures, discipline, staffing, particularly pertaining to um, hiring practices and also
Data.
Data and and um, the other staffing portion was professional development. And there is one more that is culture. And so within each of those five pillars, we actually have provided a goal statement within the DEI framework that is available to you. Um, and so we did want to mention that. And going off of what Chris says, I think we do all have different perspectives, but I would also just like to chime in that I believe one of the broader goals of our DA Committee is that we are able to prove that we have had a positive impact on our school through the youth truth data and students from marginalized communities saying that yes, they are feeling safer on campus now that we have restorative practices and circles, et cetera.
Okay, and we have a comment from David Carey.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say how much I appreciate everyone who has helped make this committee possible and especially those people who have served on it. So of those who have made it possible, certainly all of you. People I on the committee that I'd really like to give a shout out to are the students. Because I've I've sat through and attended most of the meetings that the committee has had. And time and again, the students are there and bring the conversation back to, yes, but here is the student experience. Here are the problems we are facing. Let's make sure we're dealing with those and not getting sidetracked on some some other issues or or some other perspectives that uh, so keeping the the committee's work anchored on the student experience has been especially helpful. I've, it's been 10 months now since this board uh, commissioned passed the resolution for the uh, committee. And I've sat and they've just done some amazing work in terms of some of their planning, especially during uh, this last spring. Towards, you know, I think there was some real hope that there would have a plan that they could present to the board and the board could adopt uh, that would start to be acted on uh, this fall. And they didn't quite make that. They, maybe September. And now it's, well, one of the things I'm really disappointed in is we have a a plan, apparently, uh, call it what you will. That it sounds like maybe none of you have seen yet. And that we have not shown to the world. Um, starting around the summertime, it was that, um. Yes, we need more feedback. We need more, more input for more people, but. The superintendent didn't want committee members to share it with anybody. And it's become more and more restricted since then, which I think is a mistake. Um, I have offered some suggestions about how the planning should be done in a different way rather than a strategic plan, one that emphasizes that this is a. Ongoing repetitive process. And that focuses on planning for getting, getting some things done early. Um, there's a lot that Anita has done that's just amazing. I think you'll find that those are not necessarily minute, much of that is not tied to things that. The committee was hoping would get done this fall, uh, in some ways. And. I would just, uh, on the issue of relationships, uh, between, uh, on the committee, I will say for the parent student, um. I think one of this, that has actually been one of the strengths of this committee, the way it's been operating. The students by themselves generally are not in a good position to deal with the. The bureaucracy of the district. And having somebody there who is with them and ready to help and support them in their advocacy has been very helpful. I certainly, I certainly agree that getting more voices is something that's needed, but I, I want to. Encourage you to be aware of the strength that, that of having a parent child, uh, on the. Combination on the committee has been. In terms of filling positions, the, uh. The, um. Classified position apparently has been open since July. Last time I checked, nobody had asked our CSEA president or, uh, leadership about filling that. I've been doing some recruiting, uh, had talked to Amy about it and she brought, as a result, provided some great input. And I'm kind of disappointed that at this point. We're still, still talking about trying to fill that position. An example of things that aren't getting done is recently we had a, a full-time open position for a campus supervisor. And I was interested in doing what we could to fill that with somebody who was bilingual. Our. That sort of thing is in our plan. We didn't get the full support from our HR department that we could have gotten for that if that had been something that was kind of. Something for the HR department to do. And as a result, we, we were able to hire a bilingual. Campus supervisor, but it was a result of me doing some outreach among. Other staff saying, can you talk with people you know who might fill this? And I think there are other opportunities where, where we're missing some opportunities because of the, the status of, of things at this point. Thank you.
Want to comment on that at all?
Uh, what I will comment on is that, um, the board has seen multiple drafts of the strategic plan. Uh, we're again reiterating how proud of the efforts that have already been executed at the site, many of which are built into the drafts. And so I just encourage the board to, um, you know. Honor public comments and then what people offer at the podium, but. There's really good work happening and some of those statements made were, were very inaccurate. So.
Okay. I'd like to move on to number three. Can local control accountability plan, better known as the LCAP strategic planning process overview.
I need to go there too.
So I am excited to provide district with a brief overview of strategic LCAP planning. So we are currently in phase one of the strategic planning process. Um, for the public, the LCAP is the local control accountability plan. Historically, our district has written this plan and focused on the supplemental funding that comes in for our unduplicated student population. Which is about 1.5 million. The plan had then been built, uh, with regard to the services. Um, and programs and staffing as they related to that funding amount. Very focused. It was more of a plan for our unduplicated students. So in looking at building and reimagining the district's strategic plan. We're, we're going through this process in a much different way. So we've had our first LCAP educational partner meeting. As Debbie mentioned in her report, it went really well. Right now we're in the process of collecting input, gathering data and performing a root cause analysis. And throughout our educational partner meeting. The bulk of the time was taken on a root cause analysis activity. And. One of the slides that I presented, and I have the slides attached to this item for your reference, for the public's reference, but we're not going to get into that. Is if I had an hour to solve a problem, I'd spend 55 minutes. Um, talking about it, five minutes coming up with solutions. So we're really trying to talk about with regard to the data, the conditions in which affect our students. And, and the barriers to their successes. And that's an ongoing process. So that's root cause analysis. As we get into phase two, we'll be revisiting the mission and the values of the district. We hope to, um. Create a new mission statement. Our mission statement is not necessarily aligned with where our district is today. Right? Our district has never looked more different post pandemic, post consolidation. Our enrollments look different. Our staffing looks different. Our initiatives look different. So the LCAP is going to really be the guiding light for our district as the strategic plan. Which is another reason why we are looking at the language for the DEI work and we felt like framework was a little bit more appropriate. What I'm really inspired by is aligning all of our district initiatives through the LCAP strategic planning process. And so obviously I have this infographic, I have some available for the public. Um, this is obviously posted on the board agenda. We brought it to showcase night last night. We will be sharing this with the community in multiple modalities. Phase three of the LCAP process is identifying actions, assigning metrics, allocating funds, collecting input. And then revising and refining, revising and refining. So this is an ongoing process. We have, so we had six meetings scheduled for the year, many more than the district has offered in the past. And not only will we engage. With the educational partner committee, but we're going to take elements of the strategic planning process outside of the committee. Such as visiting a staff meeting and, and doing some of those mirroring, some of those educational partner activities in which we're looking at data. And potentially evaluating the outcomes of the root cause analysis. So phase one is called the foundational phase. Phase two is the design phase. And phase three is the development phase. We'll be working on this all throughout the year. Really, really excited. Bringing in all district expenditures as they relate to program, staffing. Um. Pretty much everything from the district budgets with the exception of operational costs. So the transparency is going to be something like we've never seen before with regard to the district's strategic plan, the budget. How it aligns with the LCAP, how it aligns with DEI, how it aligns with the potential to build a community school on the Forestville campus. All of our initiatives and it's an opportunity to really look at where we are, where we want to go, what's best for our students. And how we can build that into a sound plan that is the district strategic plan. So without getting into the weeds on. Maybe some of the stuff I presented to you in past LCAP presentations, I really wanted this to be high level overview. Not scripted. You've got the documents. You've, you saw what we did as an educational partner committee. But this is what I've been speaking in, in my meetings and since I've been here, these are the conversations that we're having. I can't tell you how many times I use that phrase. We've never looked more different. Right? And so that means our actions have to change. Our plans have to change. The way the plan was written in prior years created. Un. Executable actions, which resulted in a, a huge amount of carryover funds. And so we worked creatively to look at, well, where is the majority of the district's expenditures with regard to unduplicated students? And we spend over $2 million a year on transportation. Many of those students are in the unduplicated student count. So you know this, we've moved big blocks of money from transportation into the LCAP appropriately. And now those monies are freed up to do something else in different ways. And we're going to look at it differently, right? That may not be what we do in future years. We're really going to target the supplemental concentration funds on our unduplicated students. And the services. And again, that's about 1.5 million. But the beauty of this plan is it's going to reflect the entire district budget, again, with the exception of some of those operational costs. And those will show in the LCAP as non-contributing amounts. When you read the LCAP, you'll see in the budget component, um, where the actions are and the dollar amounts are allocated contributing. That means it's coming from the 1.5 supplemental that we get as part of the formula for the 40% unduplicated students that we have. And then the other amounts will show non-contributing. Because I was fortunate enough to work with Shell at last year on SCOSDINE. In revising the second year of the three-year cycle, we started bringing in those non-contributing amounts, knowing that we wanted to build a better LCAP for our district, ultimately for our students. Any questions?
So, um, back to the transportation and I, I mentioned this at the LCAP meeting. Um, when we have supplemental funds for particular population. It seems that we should offer enhanced services with those funds. And it sounds like. We just supplanted. And then removed that money. So the, the transportation. Expenditures did not go up. We just changed the money we were using.
But if you remember Debbie, before, before we moved the money, we worked with West County to see if we could, um, expand. And they're 25 drivers short last year. They're still 30 drivers short. So we did do our due diligence and looking at, can we use some of these monies to increase transportation efforts? But you know, I don't see it that way because we worked closely with SCO on this. Know that that wasn't a decision that Andrew and I made internally. We worked with the folks that actually approved the LCAP into how we could best spend the carryover monies. Because the plan was just not written in a way that we could execute it. Many of those monies were de- designated for professional development, for things we just didn't have time, space and the ability to do. So. Again, in that regard, in working with the previous plan, we were being as creative as possible. To best utilize those supplemental funds. That doesn't mean that that's what we're going to do moving forward, but it's not necessarily supplanting. Because the LCAP is about providing services that those students need based on your educational partner input and that can be ongoing. And the fact that the district hadn't looked at that. In a previous LCAP, well, we had to kind of clean that up, right? So, um, I think we want to look at through this engagement and through the input and feedback that we receive. Where can we sustain current program? Where is it feasible to expand to your point, current program, which we tried to do with transportation, wasn't feasible, but. You know, we know that there's a need for greater family engagement. That could, that could be one of the action items. That could be. Where we go in terms of expanding staffing or opportunities or sections, but. We're not even at that place yet and we're going to have to keep reminding the committee to go through the process to really wallow in the why and the conditions that really. Put barriers up in terms of student success and student supports. So.
Great. Yeah. And then the, yeah, the family and community engagement, just going back to our earlier conversation about. Making our meetings more accessible by meeting quarterly at the El Malino campus. That could actually play right into LCAP. My other question for you is, um, on the scheduling of these, um. Engagement opportunities for parents, students and staff. The checklist talks about. You know, before the end of December, having two or three opportunities for parents. Um, several focus groups with students and staff. Do we have dates for that? Are we still working on that? When?
The bulk of that is through the educational partner committee and, and I'll remind you once again, the checklist is recommended. Um, and so we're following, uh, the plan as laid out by our consultant who writes these documents for SCO. And we're really trying to meet our community where we are. Unfortunately, Annalee didn't have site council. I know that our administration is in the process of developing and identifying site council, parent advisory. Um, but so this document is not necessarily going to be followed time by time. And that's why I made sure to go through item by item and show you where we are in those processes in my correspondence with the board. So I think that we've made that really clear. And we do have plans to make sure that we align as best as possible with this checklist, but this isn't the guiding. This isn't a mandatory checklist to follow. So we've got to look at how this really works for our community and do our best to align with what. This document lays out as best practices. But again, if you look at our document that we created. It has much of these to-dos and we are going to create our timeline based on what's feasible, what's appropriate. And again, where systems may need to be in place that haven't been in the past. So.
So we have a couple of parents and students on the committee. How are we, are there going to be surveys to these groups of people? If not actual meetings, how are we going to solicit? Information about what the priorities are. And from our stakeholders, other than just the individuals that come to the meeting.
Again, through site council, through going to staff meetings, through surveys, you were at showcase night. We had a QR code up for families to take and give us input that's not specific to goals, but more like overarching questions. What do I want from my student? Um, so we're identifying the modalities in which we can expand. Well beyond what the district's done in terms of taking input in and building a strategic plan. So you're a part of the committee, you'll be a part of those decisions. And we're, we're. Identifying the committees that haven't been in place so that we can expand how we get some of that additional, um, engagement. So.
I missed the QR code last night. So is that going to stay live for a period of time?
Yeah, it's going to stay live all year and that's specific to parents.
What I was at. So, so that's a way for any, for, for students and parents. Is it one?
That one specifically for parents.
Parents. Okay.
And I took it, I shared with you, um, the series one. LCAP presentation and specifically. Informed you that page 44 of that slide. Those questions, we're going to be used in a variety of different ways. So just as a reminder, yes, that's already in the works. We're looking at other creative ways to engage our, our community.
Yeah. Because I mean, I, I appreciate being in the committee and all of the people in the committee. But none of us. Know. What everybody else needs. So I just hope that we're doing broad community outreach and not just leaving it to that, you know, small group of kinderco people.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
David Carey, you have a comment?
I'm on the, uh, LCAP committee and, um. It's, it's going to be a big task, especially with the expanded scope of LCAP covering kind of the full range of, of state funding and not just the supplemental funding. Um, six hours or an hour and a half a piece is nine hours. Um, I think there's going to be a huge amount there for that committee to, to deal with. And I certainly appreciate that the. What the superintendent has said about reaching out to, to more people in more ways to help support that. I will say that I was a little bit disappointed about how this last meeting went, um, in terms of. Do, doing a, um. Root cause analysis. I thought it wasn't very well explained what a root cause analysis was, um. And. What a root cause was even. And, um. We certainly did a lot of, of talking about why things were happening. Um, it was limited to. A very constrained set of issues that were presented that you see in the, in the agenda and, um. But, but not saying, okay, if, if this is the first cause, this is first why, what's, why is that? Until you get down to a root cause. It's not an easy thing to do. And, um. And it, and it relates to just, there's a lot to do there. And based on what we did in that one meeting. I kind of. See that it's going to be difficult to do this, have us do a good job with, with everything that needs to be done. Thank you.
I, 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 not, not on what David's saying, but just reminding the board that. You know, the, the committee, the ed partner committee is not going to be tasked with writing the plan. That's not their role. Their role is to provide insights. And then district leadership writes the plan. Then we bring the plan back and then we take some feedback and we revise it. So. Um, I think dedicating six meetings is, is what's recommended by, um. Someone who's wrote many LCAPs for many districts and many county offices. I'm really proud of the process. I'll, I'll take the feedback and how we can make each meeting better. I thought did Chuck did a beautiful job of explaining root cause analysis and the science behind it. But we need to go deeper. Obviously that feedback is important. I appreciate your honesty, David. And we're to take that in consideration as we go through the next, uh, meetings. So, but it, it, it's, it's the committee's job to provide insights, to look at data, to go through the timeline with us. And then it's our job to write the plan. And, and best allocate the resources. And then it's our job to write the plan and, and best allocate the resources. So, and we're not going to get into the weeds where we don't need to get into the weeds, right? And we're going to focus on the, the supplemental concentration funding, but bring in the district initiatives and, and how we're looking at this in, in terms of it being the strategic plan, so.
Thank you very much. And now we are on consideration of approval of recommended revisions of CSBA policy AR 1330, BP 3312, BP 3551, AR 3551, BP 5131.9 and BP 6154. Can I have a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
Any, uh, questions?
Chris, were you going to give a little overview of the, um, Beth input that you went best?
Presented them last month is because that was optional language that we chose not to include. So we've included for these policies, all of the language as recommended by CSBA. So I apologize, but apologize if I didn't make that clear. But these policies have the language that we need. And there was an optional place for us to look at maybe district practices as they relate to staff accountability. And we didn't find those policies necessary because what the policies entailed give our teachers the autonomy to do what they do and be professional. So I, I didn't feel the need to do that or engage in a committee to really look at, um, some of that specific district practice. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that answers my question, I just wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity to weigh in.
Are we ready to vote? Yes, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number five, first reading of recommended revisions from CSBA, October 2023, updates for policies and regulations.
Any questions on any of the policies? These are all, um, in here as a first read. Many of these were based on law and mandatory updates, so.
Questions? Okay, human resources. Consideration of approval of monthly personnel report.
Okay, I just have one update to the report that was in the board packet on, that was posted on Friday. We have hired John Greck as the newspaper literary magazine coordinator for Annley High School, it's a stipend position. Edition that I have.
All right.
That's an add-on to his existing teacher role.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor?
Did we move?
Oh, I thought I did that. Sorry, can I have a motion?
I move that we approve John Gretsch.
Just the, the whole monthly personnel report. Not just.
I move that we approve the monthly personnel report.
Including John Gretsch.
Including John Gretsch.
I'll second that.
You second, okay. All those in favor? Aye. I oppose? All right, number two. Consideration and adoption of the successor contract proposals to the California School Employees Association, SCEA, Annaly area, chapter number 172, by the Western Emma County Union High School District in public hearing. Can I have a motion first?
I move that we approve, uh,
Number two.
Openers for CSEA.
Oh, I have to open for a public hearing?
And then ask if there's any.
Any questions from the community? Okay, so what do I do?
Oh, open the.
Okay, it's, uh, 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 open to public hearing, okay. God's sake, okay. Do I have to do anything else?
Good job.
Wait for.
We wait for public, wait for public input.
No public input.
No public input.
Very much.
We close public hearing.
Close public hearing, okay. My gosh, I haven't done this before, have I? I don't remember, okay. Thanks for coaching me through it. All right, number three, can I move on now? All right. Consideration of acceptance of openers from California School Employees Association, SCEA, Annaly area, chapter 172, for contract negotiations with the Western Emma County Union High School District for 2024, 2025.
I move that we approve the CSEA 2023, 2024 openers.
Can I have a second? Okay, do you have anything you want to say?
This is actually something, yeah. So, do we have somebody from CSEA that's here to present their? Okay, okay. So our openers were pretty straightforward in terms of the articles in which that we, um, would like to look at language and, um, open up for any questions.
Any questions? Concerned? All right, let's vote, all those in favor? Aye.
Who was the motion?
Opposed?
I seconded.
Janie Lewis.
It passed. Okay, and that's it. We are in adjournment, thank you all for coming. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, I see that the Zoom is recorded.
Thank you. All right, boom.
Boom. Boom, checkaboom.